Good evening, everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Thank you. I call the City Council meeting for Wednesday, March 27th, 2024 to order. At this time, we'll have a moment of silence. Thank you. If everyone please stand and join Alderwoman McGinnis in leading us all on the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Crutt, please call the roll.
Arden?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
McGinnis?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
Gripp?
Here.
Newton?
Here.
Lynch?
Here.
T. Dunn?
Here.
Jobchin?
Here.
Ann Berkhulter?
Here.
Ten President, Your Honor.
Thank you, sir. So again, good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for coming. As we begin the meeting of the City Council, I'd like to welcome everybody in attendance and anybody who's walking, watching through any particular device. For those in attendance here tonight, I know there's going to be a lot of pictures, but if you could please put your phone on silent, just so it doesn't get in any way of anyone talking. We respectfully welcome your comments and opinions, but please keep in mind that as you talk to the council, you're sharing your thoughts with your fellow Davenporters and anybody throughout the region. We're happy you're participating in your city government, but as to your participation, please reflect a common desire we all share to make Davenport a better place. If you want to address the council, please come to the podium. The microphone's above you. Love to know your name, order, address, and if you're not from here, we'd love to know where you're from. Please address the council as a body, not any individual, and the same with staff. We'll be respectful of you. Please be respectful of us. I know that everybody will observe the commonly accepted rules of courtesy, decorum, indignity, and good taste. We want to hear from everybody, so please don't disrupt anybody talking by clapping, yelling, or disrupting the meeting. Thank you very much. Is there a City Administrator, Ms. Merritt, update tonight?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask our Assistant City Administrator and Public Works Director Nicole Gleason to give you an update on 401 West Fourth.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity. So just to provide a background and context, staff had previously been working with the property owner, and they had hired an engineer. The engineer's report indicated they were unable to see portions of the building due to metal coverings on the facade. So staff then requested those metal coverings be removed, which was done last week. Portions of those coverings were removed, exposing some wood. Upon reinspection Monday, staff was concerned with that wood. So to accelerate the process, we called in our structural engineers at Shive Hattery and asked them to visit the site. The recommendations they provided yesterday are in front of you. I provided each of you with a packet. The recommendation one, the building should be immediately evacuated due to potential unsafe structural conditions. The building may fully or partially collapse with little or no warning. So based on that, staff did proceed with contacting tenants, posting the doors. They were on-site yesterday at approximately 3:30, and we did work with the county on some short-term displacement assistance, as well as we've been in touch with residents on contact information for longer-term displacement needs. So that's the status as we know it today.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Merritt? Very good. Okay, will an order move approval of the report of the committee, the whole from March 20th, 2024? Motion is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. We have, let's see.
Your Honor.
Sorry, I went out of order. I apologize. Will an order move approval of the City Council meeting minutes for March 13th? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And we got the other one. All right, now we have 13 appointments. I'll read them all in three proclamations. I'll read all the appointments and ask for a motion to approve. Adella Rosso, and this is all to the Citizens Advisory Committee, reapportment. Joseph Oberton, reapportment. Tushar Patel, reapportment. Mark Holloway, reapportment. Austin Byrd, reapportment. Nancy Nolan, reapportment. Reagan Johnson, reapportment. Tammy Lord, reapportment. Chad Kiefer, reapportment. Cassandra Cooper, reapportment. Elizabeth Hodges, reapportment. Ellen Rosso, reapportment. Dale Gimmore, reapportment. And is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. Thank you for your continued service. We have three proclamations: Fair Housing Month, Child Abuse Prevention Week, and Junior Achievement Day. The first one is Fair Housing Month, and that'll be read by Alderwoman Berkhulter. Alderwoman Berkhulter, please.
Thank you. The City of Davenport proclamation, whereas April 2024 marks the 56th anniversary of the passage of the Fair Housing Act of 1968, and such, and as such, we should acknowledge not only how far we have come in the last 56 years, but more importantly, what remains uncompleted in achieving the goal of complete freedom of housing choice for all persons in our country. And whereas individuals in the state of Iowa have the right to choose where to live and purchase or rent property without discrimination based on race, color, religion, age, sex, familial status, marital status, national origin, ancestry, disability, sexual orientation, and gender identity. And whereas housing discrimination continues to have both direct and disparate impact on marginalized communities and protected classes. And whereas it is critical for the federal, state, and local leaders and all community members to support the Fair Housing Act and the fair housing enforcement agencies in their missions to eliminate housing discrimination in communities all across America. And whereas it is a part of the American dream to build a life in the home of each person's choice regardless of membership in a protected class. Now therefore, we, Mike Mattson, Mayor, and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Fair Housing Month in Davenport to establish our community as open, inclusive, and committed to the fair housing and ensure that fair housing is exercised in Davenport and every community across America dated this 27th day of March 2024. I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Yes, I'm Latrice. I'm going to present this to Latrice with our civil service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and Council. On behalf of the Commission, we would ask that the city consider revamping their rental licensing ordinance and address issues with absent or negligent landlords to avoid a situation like we saw unfold yesterday. If there is any need of assistance with drafting, an update to the ordinance where we have stricter penalties, or in any way develop a process for tenants to seek some sort of address under our local laws, I'm more than willing to assist with that even though we currently lack resources. I can make time for that because I think that it directly impacts our current caseload. We see a lot of complaints involving negligent landlords who are not making repairs. People end up being displaced like what we saw yesterday and we've seen repeatedly. So I think on behalf of the Commission, we would ask that there be some sort of update to the current ordinance where we can implement some sort of remedial action for negligent or absent landlords. Happy for Housing Month. It's the 56th anniversary, as stated in the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next proclamation, Child Abuse Prevention Week. I'll read that. Proclamation, whereas Davenport's youth are one of our community's greatest assets, and ensuring that every child is raised in a safe, stable, nurturing environment is a shared obligation. And whereas child abuse can be prevented, it is vital that we as a community support parents and caregivers, as research shows that those who have support from family, friends, neighborhood, neighbors, and their communities are more likely to provide safe and healthy homes free of abuse and neglect. And whereas too many of our nation's children are exposed to extreme and sustained stress such as child abuse and neglect, which can be devastating to a child's development. And whereas we lay the foundation for children's later growth and development when the entire community takes responsibility for creating healthy environments in which to raise our children. And whereas the children in our community who have fallen victim to maltreatment deserve high-quality, evidence-based services delivered by committed and well-supported professionals. And whereas effective child abuse prevention programs succeed because of community partnerships created among families, social service agencies, schools, businesses, law enforcement agencies, faith-based organizations, and other child-serving agencies. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the City Council of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 1st to April 7th, 2024, as Child Abuse Prevention Week in the City of Davenport, and call upon all citizens, businesses, and social institutions to support our community's children by helping to ensure they grow up in a safe, stable, nurturing environment where their physical, emotional, and developmental needs are met. The City of Davenport Sky Bridge will display the color blue Monday, April 1st through Sunday, April 7th, in recognition of Child Abuse Prevention Month. Are we? I'll accept a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very good. And I'll meet Brooke Hendrick on behalf of every child formerly the Child Abuse Council of the Quad Cities.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you again for this proclamation. Child Abuse Prevention Month is the entire month of April. Child Abuse Prevention Week is that first week. But really, in my world, it's every single day. And in all of our worlds, child abuse prevention should be every single day. Really quick, how many of you have ever been the parent of a toddler? Okay, how about a teenager? All right, you guys should probably connect, right? Same brain spaces with those age groups. You can only give two-step instructions. Well, maybe one. Same attention span and tempers in toddlers and teenagers. And right there, I just made a connection between parents to show that we are all in this together. Our community is here for us. Parents are all in this together. We should be okay asking for help. And every child works to make sure that parents know they can ask for help and that they have access to the resources that they need so that their kids can thrive, even if it's just another parent to talk to, or maybe a counselor or therapist if that child has been through trauma. So I greatly appreciate this proclamation on behalf of every child, and I encourage all of you tonight, or tomorrow, to connect with the child either in your neighborhood, in your life, just to let them know that they have one more caring adult that's looking out for them. So thank you.
Thank you. Next is Junior Achievement Day, and that will be read by Alderwoman Gripp. Alderwoman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation as a former participant in junior achievement. And now, as an adult, I'm entering into my third year volunteering at Eisenhower Elementary School with Mrs. Cook and her third-grade class. This is a great program, and I'm happy to read this proclamation. Whereas the City of Davenport will observe Junior Achievement Day on April 4th, 2024, as an opportunity to recognize and celebrate junior achievement of the heartland for empowering our community's youth to own their economic success. And whereas junior achievement of the heartland's educational contributions equip our youth to become the next generation of productive employees and self-sufficient citizens to ensure the economic prosperity of Davenport. And whereas junior achievement of the heartland includes opportunities for educators, parents, and community volunteers to connect classroom learning to life after graduation. And whereas it is encouraged that parents, educators, businesses, and other members of the community join junior achievement's efforts to ensure the future success for the communities in which they live. And now therefore, we, Mayor Mike Mattson and the City of Davenport, Iowa, do hereby proclaim April 4th, 2024, as Junior Achievement Day in Davenport, and call upon all citizens of Davenport to support the goals of junior achievement of the heartland and encourage the continuation of strong partnerships between businesses, education, community, and our youth dated this 27th day of March 2024. I move the proclamation. There's a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? This proclamation has been approved, and I will meet Dougal Nelson, President and CEO of Junior Achievement of the Heartland.
So thank you, Your Honor and Council, and the citizens of Davenport who really believe in junior achievement and make it possible. Those words were great, Alderman, and really appreciate what you said. Just to put it maybe into layman's terms, you know, Junior Achievement's the world's largest organization dedicated to providing students with the skill sets and the mindsets to build thriving communities. So when I think about the City of Davenport, and I think about the future of the city, and I think about what junior achievement does, we're essentially the economic incubator, right? We're building these kids to come in and stay in the city and make the city great as it already is. You know, our volunteers are the magic that makes it happen. It's folks like yourself that go in the classroom and teach kids, you know, the connection between what they learn in school and really how it applies to the real world. We want them to understand the importance of providing for themselves and their families. We want them to be good, community-minded citizens, and only volunteers can help that happen. So, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that today is Jersey Mike's Day of Giving, where 100% of the sales from Jersey Mike's will go back to junior achievement of the heartland today. They are a huge supporter of ours, and it'd be a great way for you to support junior achievement and have a great sub while you're at it. So really appreciate it. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Next, we have one of the cool things we do every year in Davenport. In coordination with the school district, we have art in City Hall recognition. So I talked to many of you, the parents and students upstairs earlier, but just for the record here. So thank you, everyone, especially the students who put in the hard work, but especially the families, teachers, principals, school administrators, school staff, everybody that supports these youth in fulfilling what is an outstanding achievement being recognized tonight. And we'll do that individually in a second, but for folks, the art will be displayed all year on the third floor, so please, anytime, come to City Hall and take a look. So School Board members, Superintendent Sneclaw, President Gosa, and others, Rudy Newkirk, fine arts specialist from Davenport Community School District, who kind of oversees this, again, 13th year, very excited to have you here tonight to celebrate amazing talent from across the district. There are so many wonderful things that the students in Davenport Community School District do on a daily basis, weekly basis, monthly, and this is just another opportunity for us to take a time and recognize you. Art in City Hall started in 2011 to celebrate Youth Art Month. March is Youth Art Month and is a celebration of the arts. There's 22 pieces total, and one student's artwork from each school was selected by his or her teacher to be on display at City Hall for one year. So congratulations on the great work, and I'll meet at the podium the respective members to recognize these folks one at a time, these wonderful students. And as we do that, parents, move yourself where you need to, to take pictures, and then for everybody's knowledge, please stay. We will gather in front of the diocese here with the council at the end to take a big group picture. So please.
Thank you so much for having us here. Thank you for your help in celebrating Youth Art Month. For the 2023-2024 theme, One Community, One Heart, we have all of our Davenport schools here. Thank you, Davenport City Council, this partnership with Davenport Community School District for directing attention to the value of art education, encouraging commitment to the art by students, community organizations, and individuals everywhere, and increasing the community's understanding and interest in art and art education through involvement with this exhibit. Thank you, students and art educators, for your work and being here tonight. Thank you to our Davenport School Administrators, School Board, and building principals for your support in the fine arts and education. Thank you, parents, families, and friends, for being here to celebrate your students and their work and accomplishments of being selected for this honor. Tonight, the first student that we have, artist Charlie Hepner, Central High School, CAA, in Mr. Clint Balsers' class. This is an image I captured and transformed of downtown Davenport on a rainy night. I was out exploring the unique aspect of the city, and this business caught my eye. The old feel and bright colors of the neon lights and the car gave me the feeling of stepping back in time. Atreyu Antonio Lee Van Meter, Mid-City High School, Miss Stacy Jeffries' class. I assume everything I do in life is going to be a failure, and then if it turns up roses, then I'm psyched. Jonah Hill. Artist London Vinger, North High School, Mr. Kevin Guns' class. Holding a perplexed state of mind that streams from my head to my eyes in such a colorful way, how can the world fill my sight with these lovely, with these lively views? Artist Teen Tran, West High School, Mr. Dave Schaefer. I was drawn to the structure of the buildings. The structure seemed basic, but the small details added complexity to it. I chose to draw this in ink to challenge myself. Artist Ethan Snyder, Creative Arts Academy, Miss Colleen Tomlinson's class. This piece represents an important place within the Davenport community to me, the bike path. Ever since I was a kid, the path has always been an escape from a normal day of life. Whether it's bike riding, walking, or exploring, the trail has always in some way clicked. Without it, I severely doubt I would be the person I am today. Artist Raya Scott, Smart Intermediate, in Miss Melissa Hughes' class. Living here has given me, my friends, and opportunities to draw and create. Artist Iris Gomez Diaz, Sudlow Intermediate, in Miss Colleen Tomlinson's and Heidi Hernandez's class. I chose to make my artwork about multiple pieces because, like the title describes, anywhere with my big sister, Rihanna, is my favorite place. My sister makes some of the, makes some of the dullest, most beautiful, boring places, some of the most colorful and fun environments. I chose an analogous color scheme of different shades of red and purple. The colors I chose capture the feeling of joy and relaxation. I'm proud of how I was able to make an accurate representation of my older sister. Artist Bree Holtgren, Williams Intermediate, in Mr. Brian White's class. I like the buildings that are downtown. I enjoy making the shapes and colors. Artist Amethyst Thomas, Wood Intermediate, in Mrs. Kelly Rolles' class. I chose the things I did to put on my paper because they represent me and Davenport the most. Things like Modern Woodman Park, the Sky Bridge, and Duck Creek Park are nice spots to go to and hold a lot of representation. The same thing with Vanderbeer Park. The two schools, Wood Intermediate and North High School, show the school I go to and plan to go to. Logos like the BICs and Davenport Community Schools represent all of the schools in Davenport and show a marathon held in Davenport often. Artist Callie Gilchrist, Adams Elementary, in Mr. Tony Ryder's class. I've always liked public service careers, like public works and firefighting. I really like using watercolor paints. It was hard to make the colors match. My favorite part about my artwork was making the shapes of the building. It took me three or four tries. This project was difficult for me because I normally draw faces. Artist Abigail Stiff, Bluegrass Elementary, Miss Lisa Pullins' class. I chose this picture because I thought it was a very pretty place. I wanted to try and draw it. Artist Miranda Wilkie Edwards, Buffalo Elementary, in Mrs. Danielle Holder's class. I chose to create a piece of artwork featuring the Centennial Bridge. I think it is so pretty when it lights up at night. I use watercolors, oil pastels, and tempera paint. Artist Harper Getch, Eisenhower Elementary, in Mrs. Kate Witherspoon's class. I love the Figgy Museum because of all of the art, and I love the Sky Bridge because I feel like I'm floating. Artist Amelia Powers, from Fillmore Elementary, in Mr. Derek Lums' class. I chose the Figgy for my landmark because no one else picked it. It turned out better than I thought. Artist Luke Snar, Harrison Elementary, in Mrs. Laura Carter's class. Here is my map art of Davenport, Iowa. It made me feel good making such a beautiful piece of art. All these places I love and make me feel relaxed when I go to them. Artist Adeline Darnell, Hayes Elementary, in Mrs. Anne Renfeld's class. I really love drawing, so this is a very, this is very exciting for me. The artwork was so fun to work on. I really tried to make it look similar to myself and Davenport Riverfront on the Fourth of July. I am thankful that it was picked. I always wanted to be an art teacher. Artist Liliana Flores, Jefferson Elementary, in Miss Liliana Carter's class. I made my art because the, about the bridge because I think it is beautiful. Artist Jada Clay, from Madison Elementary, in Miss Haley Burney's class. I wanted to draw the bridge because it always has fun lights and it's new. I love drawing and art, and I like drawing at home. Artist Marian Driscoll, from McKinley Elementary, in Miss Jamie Chalice's class. I chose the bridge because it is so pretty. The bridge shows off the best part of Davenport. The clouds and the sunset are so pretty over the bridge. Artist Alondra Jones, Truman Elementary, Mrs. Erin Hunter's class. I picked Fejivare Park. I've always been, I've been there once, and it was the best park ever. The slides were the best. We saw the geese. I always went there when, I went there, there was a light snow. I want people to know about it because it's fun and not a lot of people have been there. Artist Aleah Messenger, Walcott K8, in Mrs. Anna Blackburn's class. This is Sully. I chose to draw Sully for many reasons. One, she reminds me of walking home from school, as I would occasionally see her in her front yard from time to time. She's very friendly and very pretty. There's also the old water- There's also the old water tower in the background that's got taken down recently. So this certain picture of the, of her refreshes my memory of it. Finally, she's a dog. I love drawing dogs, so this was an easy pick for me. And last but not least, Ainsley Houselog, from Wilson Elementary, in Mrs. Sarah Vars' class. This painting is special to me because I worked hard on it, and I think the bridge is a beautiful thing to see.
Okay, Council? Kind of stand up and get close behind everyone? Thank you, everyone. We'll pause a moment. If the respective parents, families, guardians, students want to leave, you're certainly welcome to stay for the meeting, but if you want to go now, this would be a good time, and we'll pause until most folks have exited. Okay, thank you, everyone. Next item is Petitions/Communications from Council, anyone. See, okay, very good. Alderman McGinnis.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just wanted to remind everyone that the City of Davenport will be closed on Good Friday, and that's, that's Friday, April 29th, for the Easter holiday. The City, I'll just wait a minute, I'm still...
I get it. As people come in, if you'd please find your seats. I know that we're, you know, keeping a watch on the capacity, so we'll pause here a second.
I think it's quite, so again, the City of Davenport will be closed on Friday, April 29th. City Hall and Public Works, our libraries, Park and Rec Advan offices, the Junior Theater will be closed. Open on Friday, and on Friday will be Rivers Edge and the Vanderbeer Conservatory. The city bus will be running on Friday. Rivers Edge, Vanderbeer will, of course, be closed on Sunday. So, I hope everyone has a great Easter and enjoy your holiday. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman McGinnis. Alderman Jobjan.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. You know, second, your sentiments about the Art in City Hall Recognition Night, cool night, lot to see, a lot of, all the talent of these kids, you know, as I talk with some of colleagues, you know, we're all amazed at what the students in our schools can do. You know, I've said this before, we can have all the jobs available, we can have all the housing available, but what I really feel makes people want to come live in Davenport and raise a family is a good, strong school system. And so, I appreciate Superintendent Snekloth, all of those involved with the school district. You know, we have many talented teachers in our school district here in Davenport. We have very many talented students, and a lot of times, that just needs to be highlighted a little bit more, so I'm glad we can do a little bit of that on an evening like this. It's great to see. And then, secondly, I want to apologize, I made an error last week in not looking at the schedule well enough. I called a special city council meeting for tomorrow, which I am going to call that we moved because of a conflict on the schedule. And so, therefore, I'm going to call a special city council meeting for Tuesday, April 2nd, 4:45 PM, Davenport City Hall Council Chambers, for the purpose of holding an executive session pursuant to Iowa code and at the request of the employees to discuss personnel matters.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay, that's good. Okay, everybody got the date? 4:45, Tuesday, 2 April. Very good. Anything else? Good. Okay, Alderman Gripp, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to give the council and the public an update on the city administrator search process. We got back, I think, eight applications from the RFP for search firms to help us in this process. The committee is currently ranking those. Those rankings are due tomorrow. And then, our next meeting is Wednesday, April 3rd. At that meeting, we will be interviewing executive search firms to hopefully decide on one. And then, once we have an executive search firm selected, we will work with them to recruit and hire a new city administrator. We are still tracking for our target date to have the new city administrator in place by September 1st of this year. And I also wanted to provide an update that we did have on the committee. It's a mixture of elected officials and citizens. We did have two citizens from the committee signal to the mayor that they're not going to be able to fulfill their duty on that committee for some personal reasons. And so, the mayor is currently looking for two replacements, and once he has the names of those replacements, I will provide that in an update to the council and the city as well. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Gripp. Alderman Kelly.
Thank you, sir. First of all, I want to give a shout out to my mama. I used to look like that with the Bible verses and Diane, so I wanted to say, lean out into your own understanding, and when you know better, you do better. So I want to shout out 401 Fourth Street and that sadness, and I see that the city is, you know, trying to move forward and do some things. I'm happy to see the small things that I'm seeing, but I know, like I said, when you know better, you do better. And on a good note, tomorrow night is the first night of my new Ward Alderman, things that I'm going to be doing is called a Night Out with the Alderman. So it will be at 1715 North Harrison Street. It's a boutique called 563 Vintage, and the next-door boutique as well, Keisha Couture. So if you guys have nothing to do, come out and check out your Alderman supporting his small businesses in his neighborhood, a night out with the Alderman, and thank you, sir.
Thank you, Alderman Kelly. Alderman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First, an update on the Code of Conduct. I want the public to be aware that a committee was formed. The committee consists of myself, Alderman Kelly, Alderman Jobjan, and Alderman Reinhardt. We had the ability to meet with the Iowa League of Cities to get information and guidance on the law, what can be done. We were also provided with examples of other jurisdictions in the state of Iowa. Currently, we have our next meeting set for April 9th. We would like to hopefully work as quickly as possible to get something to the council. I think the overall goal is to be able to put together a draft resolution to present to council. Second, unfortunately, the headlines of Davenport's perceived lack of transparency was the subject of a Iowa House Committee meeting that took place today at 11:00. I had the ability to watch a portion of it, and I will say some of the information or comments are of concern. I do think that Davenport needs to do better, and the only way that Davenport can do better is for this council to take lead and work together to ensure that Davenport, again, is working for the people. Last, but certainly not least, I would like to just highlight that March is Women's History Month. I know we didn't have a proclamation for that, but I certainly wanted to, you know, bring light the importance of the contributions that women make to our society, to our city, to our state, to our great country. And while, as a country and a community, we have certainly moved forward, we still have progress to make. There are still disparities that exist, such as the wage gap disparity, and there's disparities just in treatment. Sometimes actions that a male takes are deemed as assertive or looked in a positive light, when the same actions taken by a woman can be deemed aggressive, defiant, difficult. So, I want to say again, it's Women's History Month. To all the women out there, keep being aggressive. Thank you. I yield the floor back to you.
Thank you, Alderman Newton. Anyone else? Very good. Okay, next item, there are no individual items on the discussion agenda, so is there a motion for approval of all items on the consent agenda? So, motion and a second. Brian, please call the rule for all items on the consent agenda. Reinhardt?
Yes.
T. Dunn?
Yes.
Burkholder?
Yes.
Ardon?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Jobjan?
Yes, except for I will abstain to the assumption of liquor license under item 31.
Noted. Lynch?
Yes.
Gripp?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Anne Newton?
Yes.
10 yeses with Alderman Jobjan's abstention noted, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. Consent approved. Next item, are there any other ordinances, resolutions, or motions? There are none for tonight. Motion and second to adjourn, all in favor? Opposed? Very good. Have a good Easter.